Right. Call to order the workshop for January fourteenth, 2019. Call upon Kristen Rush for role call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Good. We, first item on the workshops is Whisper Village Sketch Plan Water Allocation Discussion generally located at the northeast corner of West Ninetieth and Indiana Street. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's the council senior planner Linda Hoover will present this item.
Good evening, Ms. Hoover.
Good evening, council. Again, Linda Hoover with the planning department. I'm here tonight to present the sketch plan for Whisper Village. This twenty-six acre property is located at the northeast corner of Ninetieth and Indiana, just east of where the Candela's development is currently underway with King Supers and the other development going on up there. Much like other properties on the Indiana corridor, we've seen a lot of interest in development on these properties. And the applicant today is requesting some information from you guidance on you from the perspective of water use in particular for their proposed mixed-use development on this property. This property is twenty-six acres and what they're proposing currently, let me back up. Currently, the property is owned P U D B P R, which is Planned Unit Development, Business, Professional Office and Residential. So it is designated in the zoning as allowed residential uses. However, on the outlined development plan that was approved in the past, it is slated for only commercial uses. So in order to move forward with their proposal, they would like to take the eastern half of that property, so approximately eleven acres of the twenty-six, and turn that into residential development. In order to do that, though, they need to have water to serve that property. This property, like many other properties up in the area, is part of the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District. And that district has water rights allocated to it for use on commercial and for residential properties. There were a number of resolutions back in two thousand and two that said seventy-five percent of the Jefferson Center Metro District water should be slated for commercial properties and twenty-five percent of their water shall be for residential properties. All of that twenty-five percent has now been allocated, so there's no longer any residential allocation left through the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District. So they're trying to figure out what does that mean for this property if they want to move forward with residential property. So there's a couple options that need to happen. They would either have to, there's several, like I said, several options. You would either have to change the allocation with the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District to convert some of those commercial water to allow for the residential uses. Or the city does have in a reserve three hundred acre feet of water. The question would be, does the city want to use part of our reserve for residential in this location or do we want to keep that for properties in the future in the inner area of the city that don't have any other way to get water? There are no other options available. The third option would be if there is no water in either of those first two options to allow for residential development, they would have to move forward with something that did not have residential development. What the developers tell us at this point in time is that that's not the most viable option for them, that the property depth is too deep to have commercial go all the way to the east. The visibility isn't there, the access isn't there. They think it would be better suited to have mixed use with residential on the east side of the property. So those are kind of the questions that they're trying to get direction on this evening is, you know, what is the way to go to get water on this property? They would still have to come back in either scenario to amend an outline development plan, get a preliminary development plan, and plat and present that comeback through the normal hearing process. You would still see all of those items through the public hearing at a later date. But again, right now, they're just trying to get a handle on, do they have water to even pursue those options?
Remind me again of when we put those initial requirements for the seventy-five, twenty-five?
There was one in two thousand and two, the city council passed a resolution, R O two dash one oh four, which allocated the seventy-five, twenty-five. And then there was another resolution, I believe in two thousand and five. Yes, council bill zero five dash zero one three, ordinance thirty-nine forty-three that allocates water from J C M B would both need to be adjusted and accommodated if you want to change that. They'd have to amend both of those.
Okay. So, you know, as someone who was here in that timeframe and was looking at what we thought this area, how it was going to develop, you know, obviously, there was a desire for a large portion for a commercial type of development. The question, you know, I think we have to wrestle with is, has the economic climate changed such that it's more feasible to have additional residential development? Both because residential brings commercial, you know, everything I hear is that, you know, you've got to have the rooftops to justify additional commercial. Or is this an area that we want to keep a hundred percent commercial? So I think that's the discussion we need to have. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions and then some comments, too. First of all, what might be the impact of the housing? How many units might be? I know that we don't have anything specific there, but when they've allocated or talking about a given amount of water, they must have in mind what size the residential development might be.
Yeah, I don't know that we have an exact number yet on the residential units. Based on their preliminary calculations and talking with Jim Sullivan, he estimated that the city, that they would need about thirty-six acre feet of water to serve the proposed residential. So that gives you an idea of at least how much water would need to come from either the city or J C M D to transfer. As far as number of units, I think they're talking over thirty, three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty units.
They would be attached.
Okay.
What's the, oh, I'm sorry. Ryan's correcting me, a hundred.
A hundred units. Okay, that, that sounds more reasonable to me. I wonder, perhaps, the mayor being here in two thousand and two, if you tell me, suppose they had come at that point, or the outline development plan had suggested a sixty-nine percent, thirty-one percent split? Do you think you might have been in favor of that at the time? Because that's what we're dealing with now, is a variance of about six percent of the, of the water. And it does seem to me that that's not a substantial or significant change. You know, seventy-five, twenty-five, just kind of nice round numbers that we're used to. But if they had come and said, we'd like a sixty-nine, thirty-one percent split, I suspect the council would have said.
Entirely possible.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
So anyway, I do not have a, a problem with it. I would not recommend or not be in favor of using the city's reserved water, but would be in favor of, of the, of the change in the splits, so.
Mr. Marriott?
So I've got a couple of questions. Linda, one for you. So changing the allocation of water would address this parcel. How many other similar situations are there? Could there possibly be there within the J M Jefferson Center Metro District that are exactly the same? Because it would seem like every one of these conversions is going to require a reapportionment, if that's.
I, I, excuse me, Ryan Stachowski, Community and Economic Development Director. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I think that that's a very fair question. And I think that the reality is, is that this is a, a proposal that we're bringing to at the request of the developers, but I think that there are more requests like this out there. I think that, as you know, we've been working with Dr. Thibodeau of the Lead School of Business, and he's done more of a comprehensive look at the market out there and what we can expect to see the market bearing in terms of land uses over the next twenty-five years. I know that that's something that we are planning on bringing to City Council, but I think your question is very appropriate because I think that some of the evidence that we're seeing from that study and just the anecdotal evidence that we're getting from the developers of what's happening and what is not happening is that this is one conversation, but there is the potential to have other conversations in the future.
Right, okay. So that kind of leads me to my next question. And Mr. Stachowski, you're probably the right person to answer this. The, you know, one of the, couple of the development issues out around this west side of town, we have residents talking all the time to us about the lack of what they see as neighborhood establishments and services within the west part of town, things like shopping and dining and all that kind of stuff. And of course, with the new King Supers right across the street from this, this would, changing this would, of course, change this one big parcel that could be either a larger coordinated commercial development or a single large tenant, if that really still exists these days, but might exist again in the future, and takes that off the map. How, my, my, I know that's the question we have to wrestle with, but the, the information to make that maybe feels like it's maybe not at hand to make a smart decision there. The, you know, I guess that study from Dr. Thibodeau is, is maybe what I'm looking for to be able to see before we could make, before I could feel real comfortable making a decision like this. I guess the question I might ask then would be, how many other similar properties, similar situated properties that potentially could be either larger coordinated commercial development or single large tenant, you know, large box tenants? How many others of these are there out there or is this kind of the only one?
I, I definitely don't think it's the only one, but your question is a good one. And let me paint it with a little bit of context. First of all, the context is, how many big box retailers are there? And, and what areas are they looking for and where they are going to go? You know, one of the feedback that I know in talking to the applicant and asking those similar types of questions is, is this a viable site for a big box retailer to go? And from area, it is. However, for other reasons that were kind of described as, number one, we just don't think that there are too many big boxes that are left out there at this time. With the changing retail environment, you know, who knows if that's going to change or if it's not going to look like that. Also, there were some specific neighborhood concerns related to the neighborhood meeting because there was a neighborhood meeting that took place. And the neighborhood, and I don't want to misrepresent all the neighborhood concerns and those types of things, but from a general standpoint, they seem to be more in favor with a residential buffer than having a big back store at this location because of all the kind of back of house and other things like that that they felt like would be kind of impeding on Ninety, Ninetieth Avenue there as it, as it turned north. And so the other locations where this could happen is that there's a piece that is in J C M D, which is the Fortune property, and there's seventy acres, which is basically due south of where King Supers is on the west side of Indiana that lends itself for a lot of different commercial purposes. And then as you go down on the west side of that Indiana frontage, there's other things that consolidating mutual owns and those types of things that are still kind of to be determined that we can see as being a commercial node. So I don't think it eliminates the ability to ever have a big box there again.
Okay. And then one other last question, then, you know, we mentioned big box retailer, coordinated larger commercial development. You know, I think of other things like hospitals and, and others that require, you know, large sites, kind of large commercial facing sites. Is there any, anything out there where there, that would, that this would be the only site where that could possibly be done? And if this site goes away, that, that's kind of precluded from ever being out in this area?
Absolutely not. So, you know, as, as you're aware, S C L has purchased some property that they're building some medical office buildings on, and then they have options for, I think, twenty more acres and whatnot. And that's kind of kitty corner to King Supers to the southwest. And so they have options there, and then they also have options along Highway ninety-three. Also, there's two hundred and fifty to three hundred acres in between where Candela's Parkway is on Highway seventy-two to this point, that is all zoned commercially as well, that would lend itself to those opportunities as well. So there's lots of different opportunities. This being one of the best commercial and mixed-use nodes around this intersection, it's got two lights. Actually, the, the intersection to the north is a second light kind of going into it, which makes the first half of the property good for commercial. Tends to work pretty well for what they're doing. The other thing is that what I appreciate is that we talked a lot as, as a council, or you've talked a lot as a council, of wanting kind of place making, something a little bit beyond just, you know, a few commercial buildings here or there. And by having the depth of the fifteen acres, you are able to kind of have two rows, some on the front edge and some kind of near the back in order to create more of an atmosphere, something that was retained at, say, Ralston's Field North where the, the commercial center has been developed by Aura over there. So I think that that's the look and feel that they're going for. I think that there will be more auto uses that are combined with it, so that doesn't have any drive-throughs and those types of things, but it will have some eat-in dining and other services. But they don't feel like that can be pushed all the way through the twenty-five acres. They don't think it's, can work for a big box just because it's not there in the market. They think it conflicts with the neighborhood. And so the depth of the commercial, they really think is the fifteen acres and can work, but then they need to figure out that other piece, and that's where the residential comes in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Pfeifer?
All right, so questions around the water usage, residential versus commercial? So on a per acre, how much water usage is allocated to a per acre of residential versus a per acre of commercial?
We could ask our resident expert, Mr. Sullivan, to help with that question.
Very generally, you're talking about two acre foot per acre on the residential in this particular case because the higher density, it's going to be closer to three. And typically for a commercial residential, what we call suburban, commercial is going to be one acre foot per acre.
Okay, so three to one usage. So we're, we're saying on eleven acres or so, we were willing to put three times more water into it when it sounds like we've already hit what we allocated, which was twenty-five percent to residential. So in the scheme of things, work with my madness as I walk through this.
Sure.
In the scheme of things, if we keep allowing or allow this one, allow the next one, allow the next one, are we starting to consume more water than what we originally planned twenty years ago for this? Because I think a three to one worries me a little bit. I get it's only, only eleven feet, and this is the only one we'll ever hear, right?
No.
No, exactly. So, so when will it stop? And so I'm afraid if we open up Pandora's Box on this, we're just going to keep talking about more water, more water, more water. We're already accused that we're drinking all the water there is in the whole western area anyways by some of our neighbors. So I don't want to fuel that argument by, by going against something we might have planned, you know, eighteen years ago or so, sixteen years. So that, that worries me. I think we should stay the course because of that. Also, the question or concern I would have is, you know, yes, all the commercials on the west side of Indiana, but urban planners and every meeting at N L C and any talk about transportation and city planning, when you have a freeway between communities, the west side is some other community, the west side of Indiana versus the east side of Indiana. So the freeway becomes a natural or a human-made barrier for folks to get across the highway to patronize the businesses across. It's not, it's not something people look at doing when all the businesses are on the other side of the train tracks in this, this scenario. Does that make sense?
Are you, and, and the highway that you're talking about is Indiana?
Indiana.
Okay.
The wider it gets, and it's getting wider.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's something that somebody's not going to play chicken. I dare anyone to go to Fifty Second and Wadsworth and try to cross the freeway safely. Or the, should say Wadsworth, I shouldn't say freeway, but eight lanes. So I, I think we need to keep some of the commercial aspects of it on this side of, which is the east side of Indiana. I think that the plan there, I know it's P P R, but I think that makes some sense for the residents to go and, and do things. I'm not sure big box is the right answer, but I do think that business of some sort commercial, you know, people will get hired to do things kind of center. One other thing I hear complaint in this area is everyone still wants a town center kind of feel, and we need to keep that. I don't know how that would look in here, but it would be interesting to see some of that happening. We, we're not seeing it happen, and I, I get it, the market will drive it. But there's a place of, a sense of community, a sense of place and, and a sense of, you know, folks gathering and patronizing businesses like they do up at Five Parks. So, you know, I, I feel like we should probably preserve this area in light of the water. I'm afraid that we'll never stop asking for more water. And I think that the commercial needs to be on that side of the road. I'm not convinced that this is something we should move on. I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Pardon my voice, first of all. My very white. So, yeah, I mean, a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, so I won't re-say it. But, you know, if I was at that community meeting, I probably would want a residential buffer between me and, and some commercial lots as well. You know, I, and I don't know if this, what I'm looking at, I found on the internet is, you know, who's drawing this is, but I found a drawing that has retail and, and residential as a concept there. And so it's, it's interesting. I can certainly see how that could work. My only concern is that, to what Mr. Pfeifer was saying, we do it once and then, you know, developers, it's really easy just to say, you know what, we're going to just do residential. It's easier, we can sell them, we're in and out, bam bam bam, but we'll continue to not provide the services as Mr. Marriott talked about to the folks that live in that northwest side of town. So my big concern is that if we do it once, someone's going to wonder why we won't do it for them. And so, you know, I would, I would lean towards, you know, keeping it the way it is unless there was a really good compelling reason, you know, why, what those hundred units look like. You know, what's the market base for those hundred units? So that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, sir. I just have a quick question, and I'm not sure who would like to answer this, but in the spirit of strategic planning and projection, where I like to go with things, have we taken a look at the development that has happened since two thousand and two and two thousand and five? What's been developed out there? What ratios? What we plan to see projected out there? And when we think we might hit our commercial water limit? Or if we will? And if we won't, then maybe we, we look back at Mr. McGough's conversation about changing those ratios, because it may not be as the same today as it was thirteen years ago when we first had the conversation.
So I very much appreciate that conversation. And in fact, we have been actually doing a lot of analysis right in that window. And the, the challenge with the conversation that we're having tonight is that this is a small piece of a larger picture. And there's a larger picture that we are still gathering information and being prepared to tell you through the Thibodeau study, through the analysis that Mr. Sullivan has done with his team members. And so I do think that we have kind of a larger scenario to paint to kind of understand when will it stop relative to water? Because I think it, it has to stop. We only have so much water. And, and to your point and your question of, will we ever hit that commercial limit? The likelihood based on the information that we're gathering now is no because of the market realities and challenges that we're facing with, with the, the world as it is in that area. And so, you know, we know some things about what will the Parkway do when it is built and add to the commercial viability out there. We understand what the residential market is. We also understand what the long-term commercial market is. And all those things are compared to what is the competition of investing in commercial here versus investing in commercial other ways. I don't really, it's unfair to you, it's unfair to the applicant to go down a rabbit hole of answering all those questions tonight because we haven't presented all that information in, in great detail. But I do appreciate the question, and that is part of a larger conversation that we certainly need to have at the J C M D Candela's Northwest Area level. And, and something that we are prepared to do at, at the appropriate time in the next couple of months.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. Developed another question here. The, with what the developers asking us with this sketch plan, are they asking by making the water switch to then come up with a plan to develop both these pieces together? Or would it be the residential portion only and the commercial for, for future as the market allows?
Well, it's a good question. Actually, I didn't mean to interrupt. Actually, the, there, there's two separate developers, and, and the people that are most viable, interested in it are the commercial people. They want to move forward now. We, we've actually seen people who want to do pre-application meetings with us and say, hold on for a second, that's too fast. So the commercial is ready to go. They also have people who are ready to go, no problem with the townhome. So we think that, that this can be developed simultaneously. In fact, we, you know, we would encourage that, but it's likely to be done by two different developers because of the nature of the work that the, the people involved are.
So just to, I know because you are looking for feedback to pass on to the developers, I guess here's what, here's what my feedback would be. I, I have some concern about, about doing these larger parcels like this, particularly when it comes to the water division, kind of one at a time over and over and over and over again, because I, I think we could lose track of, of the, the ending total that way, you know, when you consider them one at a time. And I think there's a little bit of a precedent setting to the actions we might take, that if we, if we do one, then that sets precedent for the next one, for the next one. You hate to be the guy who said, geez, they did it three times in a row, but now they won't do it for me? What's up with that? You know? So I, I have, have a little bit of concern about that. To me, I would feel much more comfortable kind of making the decision about this particular piece of property and division of property in, after seeing kind of a bigger holistic look at the, the current realities of this area and where all the other parts of this might fit in. And, you know, I understand, I think Mr. McGough's exactly right, the, you know, changing it by five or six percent or whatever, it doesn't seem like a big deal to me now, but I think if this was the last developable parcel, that'd be a much easier decision to make than when it's one of many. So I, I guess the only way I would consider it at all would be if, if this particular parcel were to come with, you know, development for commercial and residential at the same time, where it was one whole development. I worry just about because residential is, is, you know, topical right now, or it's, it's market opportunity in residential right now, that, that every piece of land that can gets gobbled up by residential and kind of overruns a little bit bef, you know, before the commercial catches up. Although you just said, in this particular case, maybe that's not the case. But, so the only way, I guess, I'd be willing to look at it at all would be if, if we were seeing kind of a coordinated development between the two, even if it was two different developers. But the reality is, I would, my feedback would be, I'd rather see it after kind of taking a little bit broader look at the area in general as opposed to trying to make just this decision on this property without more background.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, I think John shook my memory of a few things. One is, if we don't stay the course on some of the commercial and stuff, I mean, one thing, you know, having five-generation family here, what my family always tells me is, we're just all residential, always residential. That's all I hear is complaining about, oh, more residential, more residential. When are we going to get a restaurant? When are we going to get, you know, it's slow, we're getting there, but we are well-known as a bedroom community in the suburbs, and I get that, and that's fine. But we also need to provide services, like John said earlier. And if we didn't hold on to our land use like we have in certain areas, we wouldn't have the diversity of, of jobs and, you know, and, and environments and, we'll just say, restaurants or whatever else can come out. Because one of the biggest complaints we heard about from the restaurant industry was, well, if you don't have the density, we can't come here either. So it's a chicken and the egg. So that, that's one. The other thing is, we talked about sense of place, you know, looking at this drawing I found online that, that David brought up, you know, you're, you're kind of trying to, it looks like they're trying to create some sense of place. They don't show it there, but on here, it shows it. You know, you have these locations, you have these, I guess they're townhouses is what's being proposed here. Why doesn't this get developed or co-developed like John said and create the sense of place we're looking for, like in Five Parks, where there's some living up above or something and commercial down below or whatever sense of place? It just looks like we, through, we, each commercial building is its own building, each place is its own building, which is, it's not that it needs to be a strip mall, but you're already trying, it looks like they're trying to get there. And then why can't there's some combination that can be applied there? So maybe that's an idea to keep. Maybe that would open my eyes up a little bit if it created and achieved some of that. But again, I think to John's point, I think it has to be all inclusive or all holistic. And then also, what is the whole three, four hundred acres that still need to be developed? What does that look like at the end of the day? I don't want us to just give up because we're excited to develop something. We need to actually stay the course and focus on what we really want to paint for this community, especially out west where there's no services. So I'm, I'm leaning there, but I could be pulled depending on how that looks.
Okay.
Where I'm coming from on this, I think we, when are we going to have this study?
I believe we're looking at the second, or the first workshop.
I believe we're looking at the second, or the first workshop date in April.
April eighth.
April eighth.
Well, so from that sense, you know, I mean, this is not decision point tonight. This is input under a sketch plan theory. Frankly, I think the developer's gonna have to wait until perhaps we get that presentation to us. I mean, I think that, and what my prediction of some of that is, is going to be, we need more rooftops to be able to support commercial. But I wanna hear from the experts on that. I don't wanna just go by, you know, what, you know, just 'cause I stayed at a Holiday Inn, doesn't mean that I'm an expert, okay? I, I'm concerned that, you know, we, we lived the, the situation of approving residential and then coming back for the, for the Starbucks and the 7-Eleven. I'm not gonna go through the battle of allowing residential to be developed, and then them fighting the commercial part of it.
Right.
That's not gonna happen. So, you know, either the commercial gets developed first, or if we, indeed, we do do a mixed use, that it's done simultaneously, even with two developers. I am pleased to hear that the commercial ones, and, and I'm sort of questioning, well, wait a minute. If the commercial wants to get going, why don't we go ahead and let that happen? And then see whether or not the other parcel stays commercial, or is more justified as residential.
Part, part of the challenge with that, because we certainly suggested that, is that currently, the property is owned by one owner.
Mm-hmm.
And they wanna sell the entire twenty-five acres. But the people who are most ready to go, the commercial, is only gonna do the commercial side. And so, they wanna be able to offload
Got it.
the residential piece in order to kind of get going. But as you stated, we know that there's residential out there. They know that there's residential out there. It's just not them. And so...
Okay. And then, I think, I agree with comments that others have made, that I think we've gotta look at the whole area, so that we have a better sense of, you know, where the potential large developments could still go. And that we're not piecemealing it such that, that we get down the road and say, well, wait a minute. We've, you know, we've messed this up by, by doing it piece by piece, rather than more comprehensively. So...
Yep.
And, and frankly, you know, I, I know there's deadlines for folks in terms of making decisions on buying property or whatever. But I think we gotta play this at least until we hear from the, the experts on, on what's the best way to go. And perhaps at that same time, look at more of the parcels here, rather than just this, this one microcosm of it. Ms. Ford?
So, I wanted to add my input in the conversation. And I would definitely agree that I would like to see the parcels developed together comprehensively. I think that it's a direction that would be helpful in other areas of the city as well, to look at more than just one small parcel, but to look at an, an area as to how development is gonna affect that area, both now and in the future. I would also agree that if, for some reason, we decided to change the percentages of commercial to residential, I would like the water to come from the commercial, not from the city.
Thank you. Does that give you some direction?
It does. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Devon, our next discussion is on the annual demographics update, presented in partnership with the Department of Local Affairs.
Yes, and I believe Mr. Mayor will have, Loretta Daniel, Loretta, are you starting? Or Elizabeth, Elizabeth Garner from the Department of Local Affairs.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Thanks for the invitation to be with you guys. I appreciate it. And I appreciate working with Loretta on this, so that's really nice as well, to do that combination with the local community as well. Just stop me with any questions that you might have.
Council's not afraid to do that.
Doesn't sound like it. Doesn't sound like it. So, what I'm gonna be talking about is primarily what we see going on nationally with the state and within the region. And then Loretta's gonna go into what's going on with Arvada. So, one of the big things that we like to talk about is really, what are some of the biggest trends impacting the nation and the state? So, one of the big things that we're continuing to see is this disparity in growth, where it's not necessarily happening equally all over the state, where it's being concentrated. Migration is always a big question. How many, where, when, how can we continue to attract and retain basically the right-fit employee for the right jobs that we've got here? Aging is a big component, impacting the nation, the state, and certainly this part of the region as well. We're also seeing an increase in race and ethnic diversity, especially at the youngest ends. So, how that fits into our future job piece is one of the big things that we're following. Slowing income growth, a lot of that has to do with our age. We're definitely transitioning to lower incomes, primarily on the earning side, because we've got a larger group moving into ages that don't earn as much. And then, what we would call population growth, but slowing. And then, so just always planning for the people and everything that comes with them. Big picture, it's always important to remember that Colorado is part of the nation. So, whatever's happening nationally will impact the state. U.S. is increasing by about 2.3 million people a year, or 0.7% annual average growth rate. We're at about 325 million people in the U.S., slowest growth rate in the nation since the Great Depression in the 1930s. So, we're starting to see this slowing. A lot of it coming from aging and slowing birth rates. Colorado, we're at 5.6 million people, an increase of 1.4% annual average growth rate. So, we can see twice as fast as the U.S. as a whole. Ninth fastest this year. Last year, it was seventh. The year before that, it was second. So, we're seeing this growth rate even relative to other states slow down. Eighth in total growth, increasing by 77,000. Again, last year, the year before that, it was 90,000, and the year before that, it was 99,000. Behind some really fairly big states. We typically rank anywhere between sixth and eighth in total growth. But within the state, we know that there's a huge disparity. Anywhere from an increase in 12,000 to a decline in seven, 470. If we look at the map of the state, we can see that the red, orange, yellow counties are the fastest-growing counties, or the most growth between 2010 and current. All of the shades of blue are counties that are declining. And so, here we are, one of the faster-growing states, the third-best economy in the U.S., yet we've got almost a third of our counties declining in population. And so, again, this is what I talk about in terms of disparate growth, is that it's really concentrated along the I-25 corridor. And in fact, since 2010, 95% of the growth has been along I-25, compared to historical trends where it's closer to 83%. So, we've seen this transition within the state. If we look at total population change and what creates it, it's important to understand that it's from two pieces. One is called natural increase, which is represented by the blue component. It's births minus deaths. We can see we're current in that two, 2017 data is what we're showing most recent. You can see the peak of that natural increase was back in 2007. And we're not forecasting that we'll have natural increase back up ever again to the levels that we had at 2007, primarily because we've seen an increase in deaths and a decline in births. Net migration is represented by the red component, ins minus outs. You'll see that one year in the 1970s, we had in my, natural increase, or net migration above 100,000. That was about 5% annual average growth. In the 90s and the first year into the 2000s, we had seven years of growth over 100,000. But since 2001, we have not had growth over 100,000 in the state yet. Typically, what you hear from the media is unprecedented growth in the state. And I always ask the question, what does unprecedented mean? Because we've seen it before. It's just maybe short-term memory loss. Is that what we don't remember is that in the 90s, we actually saw what you would consider unprecedented growth above that 3% annual average growth rate. And we've seen this slowdown recently in the growth in the state. Quickly, we can just see boring chart, but red line is deaths, an increase in deaths, not because there's a weird plague. We've just got a large, a larger group of our population and age groups with higher death rates. And a slowdown in births, represented by the blue. There is no wonder why Toys R Us are closing across the U.S. and in within the state. We don't have as many kids. And that will decrease that market, plus the Amazon effect. You put the two together, you watch out for the big-box stores, especially related then to Toys R Us. If we look at Jefferson County, where majority of Arvada is in, we've got the blue line, which is births. So, we've seen a slowdown in births over time. The red line is, or the orange line is deaths. So, we've continued to see an increase in deaths in Jefferson County. The gray line is net migration, and you can see it kind of goes crazy. We've seen periods of fast growth and declines historically over time within Jefferson County. But we've started to see an increase in that migration, and a lot of that has to do with redevelopment, whether it's the redevelopment and development occurring in Arvada, as well as turnover in other parts of Jefferson County. It's one of the oldest counties in the metro area. Developed a lot of it in the 60s and the 70s, so that big family of four came in. Kids aged in place. Then it became a household of two. Same number of housing units, but you cut your population almost in half. It was one of the counties in the Denver metro area that had the slowest growth between 2000 and 2010, and an absolute decline in kids under the age of four, uh, under 18. We're now starting to see homes turnover. Typically, the people that move into new housing units are young adults. Young adults tend to then have babies, so then we start to see that process happen all over again. If we look at net migration to the state, typically, we attract young'uns. This is an age distribution of our migrants. Definitely, bread and butter is between that 22- and 37-year-old age group. At 65 is the red line. Not a lot of movement around 65, but we have it slightly positive. If we look at Jefferson County, a really different story. We can see a complete outmigration of those very young adults. So, those kind of 18- to 24-year-olds that we would consider our college students, and those on a career path, tend to move out. You get a little bit of in-migration of those 30-year-olds. And then, after 40, it's really a net out, all the way until you get to be about 80-plus. So, again, I think this is really important to look at, because this is really your market for new people. And what, who typically comes to the county, which then would be shared as part of Arvada. Adams County, completely different. So, I just wanted to see the two next to each other. Really, Adams County attracting that young adult in large numbers, and then therefore kiddos as well.
Does that housing cost play into that?
I'm pretty sure that's what, that's driving it.
Yeah.
Definitely. So, if we look at Jefferson County, and who are your donors, or your, who, who are the people that donate people to the county? Where do they come from? Denver is your largest donor, sorry. I'm a Denverite. I'm all right, though. Then we've got Adams, Arapahoe, Douglas, Boulder. You can see who are your donors. But then who do you also lose people to? Again, Denver, Adams, Arapahoe, Douglas. So, a lot of metro front-range counties are your biggest donors and losers. In net numbers, your actually largest net contributor to the growth in Jefferson County is El Paso County, and then followed by a lot of out-of-state counties. We've got Illinois, Utah, Montana, Nevada, Texas, back to Garfield County in Colorado, Georgia, California, New York. So, it's interesting to see ins, outs, and nets, what those donors are. But showing that you've got U.S.-wide appeal. Typically, what causes migration to a community or to a county, it's, a lot of it is obviously driven by jobs. The blue bar is net job growth. The red line is net migration. As we see stronger job growth, we tend to see more in-migration. As we see slower job growth, we tend to see slower in-migration. During the 2000s, we continued to see some in-migration. A lot of that had to do with the jobs we lost. We lost a lot of construction, manufacturing. We're gaining jobs in education and healthcare. Not an easy transition between the two jobs. So, a lot of people were still moving into the state to fill those jobs that we had in the fut, had opening up. You'll see the forecast into the future that we're starting to see a slowdown in job growth. That's following a national trend, as well as a slowdown in net migration, also following a nat, a national trend. But you'll see that that net migration is above job growth, which you say, why? And a lot of that actually has to do with the aging in Colorado. We've got a lot of people, about a million, aging out of the labor force, and not as many kiddos to fill those positions. So, we're gonna need people to fill jobs in the future. In terms of jobs, where is Jefferson County? Jefferson came back to pre-recession peak employment back in 2014. About, lost about 3.5% of the jobs, now at about 303,000 jobs in the county. Gained since 2010, or since 2008, of about 25,000 jobs. Number-one job in the county itself is in health services, represented by that top line. Then we've got retail, trade, professional and business services, accommodation, food services, and then local government for your top five. It's broken down by color, which represents the different wage rates in the county. The red is low wage, the purple is high wage, and the, I'm sorry, the red is low, purple is mid, green is high. And you can then see, by the county as a whole, how it's represented by that low, medium, and high. About 35%, 38% of the jobs in the low, about 30% in the mid, and about 32% in the high. Just to give a perspective of where everything is. Growth since 2008, so that pre-recession peak level of employment, number-one job growth area in the county has been in health services, in that purple color, so a mid-wage, followed by then professional and business services. You can still see that retail trade is below pre-recession peak levels of employment, shown there at the very last line. Growth since 2008 has been dominated by mid-wage jobs. You can see about 50% of the jobs have been growing in that mid-wage area. And then there's commuting. This dot, this picture shows the work in and out of Jefferson County. The first map or graph showing those that work in Jefferson County, where do they commute to home? So, definitely dominated by the east and kind of a southeast area, as far down as Colorado Springs. People coming up into Jefferson County. Then, the second one shows those that live in Jefferson County that commute to work, going a similar direction. And then, in terms of total numbers, about 130,000 folks commuting in, and about 181,000 commuting out. So, you've got a lot of transportation going on in the county, which you knew, probably. Aging a little bit is important, and especially in Jefferson County. It's one of the oldest counties in the metro area. And continuing to age, and it's just looking at that distribution of age. The most important thing to be thinking about age is the fact that people change their preferences. So, in listening to the conversation about even how you guys were gonna maybe use that parcel of land, is thinking about, where do people shop? What do they put? Products and services? Do they want what kind of housing, transportation? Everything else that comes with age, what drives it, I think is an important part to be thinking about as well. So, this is the age distribution of Colorado. Its median age is 37. You can see it dominated in a couple of different colors, primarily the purple and the red. The purple being the baby boomers, the red being the millennials. At the far-right end, you've got the greatest generation, the silent generation. The black line is at 65. Right in the middle are the boomers, then we've got our Gen X in green, our millennials in red. And then in the other blue is the post-millennials, followed then by the next generation in the brown. You will see that slope, where we've got our peak number of people are right around 30. So, our peak millennial is at about 29. And you see that slope is going down, and that is primarily because we've seen this slowdown in births. And that's really important to be thinking about in our future of the state as a whole, as well as the nation, and then obviously for the county and the municipality. If we've got Jefferson County now in perspective, compared to the state as a whole, again, the same colors, you can see that your peak really is in that baby boom generation. Black line is again at 65. Peak number of people right there at that 60-year mark, compared to in the state as a whole, right, being around the 30-year mark. So, again, a difference between the two, and you can see that trough still demonstrated by that Gen X, where you see it going dipping down into the county. So, that impacts the county as well. And you'll see that continued slowdown in the number of births. The median age in Jefferson County is 41, compared to the median for the state being 37. The median age in Jefferson County is forty-one compared to the median for the state being thirty-seven. So we're growing really old fast because we're young, and I know it's late on a Monday, but, um, it, that's, I think, that is our story. We are really young because who do we migrate here? Young'uns. So we're a really young state. We're the sixth youngest state in terms of our share of our population over the age of sixty-five. We just don't have a lot of people over the age of sixty-five. Our first group came with the baby boomers in the sixties and seventies, a lot of them located in Jefferson County. And that's why you see it dominated by the purple in that group. So we've got, we're really young, but we're the third fastest aging in terms of that sixty-five-plus. Forecast to increase from about seven hundred and eleven thousand, one point two million people, just over that fifteen-year timeframe between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and thirty. Huge economic driver. There's any reason why we wouldn't guess that health services was the number-one job growth area in the state. Growing at about five percent per year. Huge impact on occupational mix, because what are we creating? High-end and low-end jobs, eating out and health services. Even within the health services, there's a lot of low-wage jobs. So we're creating this bifurcated economy just by who we are, not because we're doing it necessarily intentionally. It's just who we are and where we spend our dollars. Impact huge on labor force in terms of our labor force participation rates and our largest group of our population. About thirty-seven percent of our labor force are boomers, aging out. That's why I'm saying there's about a million people leaving the labor force over the next twenty years. Impact on housing in terms of where people want to live and work. Interesting, though, is most of the housing units owned by people, most of the housing units for the folks sixty-five-plus are owned. About ninety-two percent are owner-occupied. So we are wondering why there's this slowdown in number of housing units coming to market? A lot of it is just who we are. We don't move and we don't sell when we're older, and we've got a much larger group of people in older age groups. So it's really interesting looking at our age dynamic and how it impacts our entire community. Also, we see this downward pressure on income because we become, um, non-earners instead of earners. Impact on health and disabilities, transportation, public finance. So across the board, our aging makes a big impact. This is just kind of another way to picture it and to look at it. The red is what our age distribution looked like in nineteen ninety. The orange is where we were then in two thousand and ten. And if you look vertically, you can see then which age groups grew a lot. And between nineteen ninety and two thousand and ten, huge growth between the forty-five and sixty-four-year-olds. You'll see that's where that big bubble is, and that's basically the boomers aging from the twenty-five to forty-four to the forty-five to sixty-four in that age group. Very little growth in that younger age group, kind of between the thirty and the forty-four, and then a little bit of growth in that younger ends, basically, uh, people migrating in. And very little growth in the sixty-five-plus during that timeframe. But if you then look behind it, that light blue, that's where we're growing right now. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirty, which is that light blue, we're seeing that growth in the sixty-five-plus. Very little growth in the forty-five to sixty-four, and then some growth in those younger adults. Those are those millennials moving in. Big question with those forty-five to sixty-four-year-olds, because they're not growing very much. Tell me something about your forty-five to sixty-four. Highest earning, highest spending, highest property tax pay. Yet they're the slowest-growing age group for our economy as a whole, not just in Jefferson County, but across the state. So if we look at your forecast for the sixty-five-plus, broken down for the, for Jefferson County as a whole, broken down sixty-five to seventy-four, seventy-five to eighty-four in the orange, and then eighty-five-plus in the gray color, we can see forecast to increase in two thousand and ten from about seventy thousand, then to two thousand and twenty at about a hundred and, um, about a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and five thousand total. And then you can continue to see that growth afterwards. But if you'll notice between two thousand and thirty and two thousand and forty, what happens to the sixty-five to seventy-four-year-olds? Shrink. Why? Because Gen Xers are entering that age group, which you don't have a lot of. So it's this interesting dynamic occurring, but certainly when we start looking at the seventy-five to eighty-four and the eighty-five-plus, that tends to be the largest service demand. So we see this aging in the state, but we have not seen anything yet. Just wait until we start, we get all of the boomers to sixty-five by two thousand and thirty, then we start aging into the eighty-five. And that's where we're really going to see an impact to the state, to the counties, and to the municipalities. Huge impact to our labor forces, I've already mentioned, so I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail, but making sure that we've got areas where people can live to fill jobs is going to be really important, because guess what? When I retire, do you think I'm going to leave? No. And I bet eighty-five percent of the people won't either. So where are the new workers going to live? So this continues to create this huge constraint within the state in terms of where do all the workers live? We were in Nirvana between nineteen ninety and two thousand and ten. The largest share of our labor force, our population, was in the labor force. Now we're moving to where the fastest growth is in our non-workers. Yet they don't leave. They stay here. So it's an interesting challenge for the state to be facing. We're also becoming more racially and ethnically diverse. We can see it, especially at our youngest ages. This graph shows two different colors. The blue is where we are right now in terms of our share of our population that Hispanic, Black, Asian, and other minorities share. So for example, our under eighteen is forty-three percent Hispanic, Black, Asian, and other minority. Then the other fifty-seven percent is white, non-Hispanic. We can then see our forecast is for that to grow to about fifty-eight percent for under eighteen by two thousand and fifty, to be basically in that minority or what we call people of color, P O C. So our youngest population is very diverse. Our older population isn't as diverse, but will be aging, will be becoming more diverse very quickly because everybody that's younger becomes older. Biggest piece of that is the largest increase in our working-age population is going to be Hispanic. And we know right now that there's a huge disparity in educational achievement by race and ethnicity, about a thirty-point difference between Hispanic and white, non-Hispanic in Bachelors Plus. We've got the second-worst achievement gap in the United States, but this is our future labor force. So we really need to be looking, as a state, as a county, as a municipality, on how do we improve achievement across all race, ethnicities? And then just to tie things up, we start seeing income slowing. As I had mentioned before, a lot of it has to do with age. We've got the fastest growth in age groups that have the lowest income. That also creates an occupational mix that's very low-wage as well, especially in the health services and then eating out. I've already talked about the race and ethnicity, putting some downward pressure on income, household type and size. It's funny, Loretta and I were talking about it, that you've got a lot of one- and two-person households. Well, if you only have one or two people in a household, they don't earn as much as a two-to-three-person household. So it's really interesting how just even our household size is putting downward pressure on household income. More growth, but slowing. So this is just the final set of slides. We're forecast to increase in the state from about that five point six million people that we're currently at to about eight point one million by two thousand and fifty. And you're probably thinking to yourself, gosh, I thought Elizabeth said slow, but that seems like about two point four million people. Yes, that is two point four million people forecast to increase between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and fifty. Majority in that purple area, which is the front, or in that blue area, which is the front range. So a lot more friends along I-25 corridor, the lighter blue being in the western slope. If we look at a map of the state, all of the darkest-colored counties are forecast to increase the most, with El Paso, Weld, and Adams driving that growth. Jefferson and, um, Broomfield are bringing up the tail end, not forecast to increase as much as the rest of the front range. Definitely driven, like I said, by Weld increasing by about three hundred and ninety-five thousand, and El Paso increasing by three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So we've got our two bookends, but right there in the middle, we've got Adams at about three hundred and forty-five thousand. All of the grayed-out counties are those that are forecast to be either flat or declines. So of that two point four million, two million along the front range, one million in the Denver metro area, six hundred up north between Larimer and Weld, four hundred thousand down south between El Paso and Pueblo, with the remaining four hundred thousand around the rest of the state. So even though it's slowing, it's still a lot of people to deal with.
Let me interrupt you there. Mr. Jones has a question.
Just to go back one slide if you'd like. So Mesa, Garfield, Eagle, is that because of I-70?
Correct.
Um, and is that, why isn't it going the other direction, east, just out of curiosity?
It's the economic drivers along the I-70 corridor, as well as you've got a lot of tourism along the I-70 corridor going west, and Mesa's now really recovering, and that we're starting to see a rebound out there. They're a nice anchor. Uh, they've got a lot of job development going on in terms still of oil and gas. The only thing driving anything economically on the eastern plains is agriculture, and it continues to have its challenges, especially with water.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Good. So obviously, I am wrong. The forecast that I give won't be right. There's so many factors that are in play. So what are some of the biggest risks of the forecast? Well, one is our housing problem, and I know many of you brought it up. We've got the second-worst change in affordability in the United States in terms of if you look at our household income versus our home price. So it is going to be then much harder for us to attract and retain people for our labor force. Certainly, what we've seen is that our largest donors have come from the coast, coastal states, basically California, and then Florida and the eastern seaboard being the people that can afford to move here. We've got a challenge with fertility. We've seen it fall dramatically within the United States, as well as in Colorado. Total fertility for Colorado has fallen to one point seven. So in terms of total number of children per woman, is that one point seven for Colorado? It's one point eight for the U.S. Replacement is two point one. So we're both below replacement levels now in terms of fertility. So a big question is, what's going to happen in terms of international migration policy? Are we going to come up with one, um, for the U.S. as a whole, and where will that fit into potential gaps in labor force? We've certainly got a water issue and a climate issue. How will that play into our growth forecast? And then, as you can imagine, there's labor force, infrastructure, state budget, education will all impact where we will be. Aging certainly will be a big question. Will we be able to attract, or will we be able to retain those that we currently have? And where will we come up the labor force to service them? Certainly, industry changes will be taking place. We'll see downturns, automation booms probably again into the future, as well as natural disasters, climate. How will that impact us? Our three biggest donor states to Colorado are California, Texas, and Florida. They've had some interesting climate situation and natural disasters over the last couple of years. Could we actually see more Californians, Texans, and Floridians coming to Colorado because our climate is better, but we've got challenges as well with floods and fire and ability to have enough water? So just then to tie things up, continued growth but slowing, um, definitely slowing births and increasing deaths. I think we're going to definitely continue to be faced with a labor force challenge in terms of being able to find enough people to fill the jobs that we're creating. So we could see continued downward pressure on job growth in the state. Aging is certainly an important factor to be looking at in terms of our market, our labor force. Everything that is affected by your personal preferences by age is going to be affected by aging in Colorado, and can we do it well, and can we service our aging population? Again, I can't really reiterate the labor force challenges that I think we're going to be facing in the nation, as well as in the state. If we think that we're just going to be able to bring in people from other states, we're mistaken because everybody else is having the same problem that we are. Biggest thing I can always recommend is plan. Plan for changes. Industrial changes, climate changes, automation changes, growth changes, slowing changes, whatever it might be. So with that, I'm done. Oh, I lied. Can I just one, bear one second?
Yes, go ahead.
Census twenty-twenty, who's excited? Is everybody excited? We've got one over here. Perfect. I'm glad. I know that you've already had maybe meetings with Census Bureau coming in and talking. Can't just reiterate how important it is and will be for our VADA to get on board and start talking about ways that you can market and talk to your community about filling out the census form. It is the most important, safe, and easiest document people will fill out. It's only eleven questions, ten minutes. It really impacts funding, about fifteen hundred dollars per person per year in federal direct transfers to the state. We miss a housing group of a hundred units or ten units. That could impact not only today, but your funding over ten years, because it starts with that base count. So totally recommend finding out what is your community worried about? What are their concerns? How can you help address it? What can you use locally? Because nobody trusts the feds. So it's not the Census Bureau's not going to market. To, Arvadenites? What do you call yourselves? Arvadonians?
Arvadens.
They're going to trust you. They're going to trust you guys. Not me, not the feds. So thinking about ways, how do you get to your constituents to say, yes, fill out this form? It's important. It's easy. It's safe. So with that, I'd, now I promise you that I am done.
Mr. Jones?
So automation, I'm curious how you're looking at that as it relates to two thousand and fifty or two thousand and thirty or, you know, and I say that only because I was at CES last week, the Consumer Electronics Show, and automation is amazing, what's kind of going on with both from, you know, vehicles to how we're going to live and how we're going to get our food and, and all of those things. And so, I mean, you have automation here, but what, is there a, is there a factor that you're using as, uh, as you're projecting that growth or no-growth scenarios with regard to automation?
Right, very good question. So what we're looking at, we use a national model, a national forecast for what's going on, and so they're starting to take automation into account. So in a lot of jobs that could be automated, they're starting to put some downward pressure on the number of new jobs created in those areas. So we're starting to see it already in our forecast. What we're recommending to groups and to entities is thinking about what is your spectrum of jobs within your community? How many of those could be easily automated? And start planning for whatever that transfer may be. Now, we're seeing actually automation in the industries right now that are having the hardest time coming up with workers. And it makes sense, you start investing in areas where you can't fill it locally. So, you know, we've seen it in manufacturing. We've seen it in transportation is a huge area. That's one of the tightest markets right now. They cannot find enough drivers. They can't not find enough people that will qualify for licenses. And so we're starting to see the automation definitely in the transportation industry. We're starting to see a lot of changes, even in the construction industry, which I think will actually be a benefit for Colorado, looking more at modular, which, um, makes it faster, and you can do it indoors. So with our climate in the winter, although, when's the last time we had a real winter? You know, it will get rid of those lower-wage jobs, but then you have to think about what will those lower-wage jobs that don't maybe, those people qualify for. So looking at those transition processes now, instead of waiting until they lose the job.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that was, you made my, you made the point I was going to make, is that you can go to McDonald's or Burger King today, and you don't need to go talk to a person. You can go to a panel and order, and they'll call your number. Those are low-paying jobs. Uh, you know, that's only, those types of, um, services are only going to become more frequent in, in our experience as, you know, people moving, moving about day to day. And so it'll be interesting to see, you know, ten years from now, you know, when you come back to give this report, uh, what automation, or how highly in your list automation is, because again, I think that we're, uh, we're in for quite a journey here over the next several years as, as things really do change. And what are those people who are counting on that eleven, twelve, thirteen-dollar-an-hour job today, being displaced by machine? What are they going to do, um, for a job after that? And then what does that do to homelessness and so, so on and so forth?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think it's those entry-level, uh, low education, low skill, or low schooling, um, that you have to worry about, as well as just entry level. You know, a lot of our kids, that's where they start, are that entry-level job, and if they never get that entry-level chance, then they're making those entry-level mistakes when they shouldn't be entry-level anymore.
Yeah, well, and you look at the millennials, uh, I would, I don't know the percentage, but I would say a very high percentage of millennials all have college degrees. And so therefore, and then they're great, you know, degrees that they've got, but now our trades are suffering because those millennials didn't, they all got college educations, which is great, but now we don't have, you know, nurses and plumbers and electricians. And so again, it's kind of that, what it was that, you know, they thought they needed to do, and so what's the next generation? And so what's the next generation? Are we gonna push them into the trades? And I say push, but you know, where are they going to migrate to?
Market the trades, yeah. No, I think, yeah, you know, it's, it's weird. The pendulum switches instead of just stays nice in the middle.
Right.
So we really pushed higher ed to the detriment of the trades.
Yeah.
And I think we'll start to see pushing back toward the trades because that's where there's gonna be some opportunities. But we always need to remember that it's about 43% of our population gets a college degree. That still leaves 57% that don't. So there's still a pretty big group of folks that...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Ms. Ford?
Do you keep track of, of transportation issues? So my, what I'd be interested in knowing is with the push on transit-oriented development, are we seeing changes in, uh, commutation behavior?
Changes in what?
Commuting behavior.
Oh, commuting. That's a good question. And I, to be honest with you, I have not, I did not study it before coming to this to know what that trend is. What we, we've seen, it actually follows gas price closer. And so when those fuel prices were much higher a couple of years ago, we started to see commuting total vehicle miles traveled decline. But since it's been fairly low recently, we've actually started to see it increase. But I don't know what it is necessarily for our VADA or Jefferson County. But also since the prices of homes have become so expensive on the inner core, we've started to see a lot more people get moved out to the outer core that aren't necessarily on transit-oriented development hubs. And so we've seen vehicle miles increase. So the fear is what happens when fuel prices increase? And we've got all these people living way out. And I'm saying way out, way beyond like our VADA levels of outside.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you.
Super thank you.
It's always enlightening to have you come. We appreciate it.
Thanks, and thanks for the invite.
Now we're gonna hear sort of the local Arvada perspective on some of this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So I'm back again to talk about demographics. And so what you received in your pocket is this document here. And it's entitled, This is Arvada 2018 Demographic Supplement. So it really is in addition to this document that you saw in December of 2017. We can consider this the baseline document. Uh, it's a pretty hefty document and kind of got into a lot of detail about in and outflows as well as the demographic information. So what the supplement is though, it's the most recent data from the Census Bureau, uh, the data that was released on December 6th for the five-year American Community Survey data for 2013 to 2017. And so what I'm gonna do in this presentation is just gonna highlight some of the differences between what was in the baseline document, which is actually the American Community Survey five-year data from 2011 to 2013. So it was a two-year gap there. So there was kind of some changes. So we're seeing a few differences particularly with coming out of the recession. As well too, we're just comparing it to with our peer cities, uh, peer communities with a population of over 100,000. So our VADA has a population, basically we rank seventh in population in the state, fifth within the region, and our 2017 population estimate is 118,807. So with growth, we have experienced quite a bit of growth, not as much as in the past, but 16.3% between 2000 and 2017, 11.6% from, uh, from the beginning of this decade, from 2010 to 2017, and just within the last year, 1.2% uh, between 2016 and 2017 for those numbers. So you've seen this graph before, but it's kind of important to point out that while we've had this growth and the projection for growth is still really quite strong. And this graph comes from the 2014, um, Comprehensive Plan with a projection of 141,000 in 2035. You can see that the projection kind of levels out. And that's basically because we're not seeing, we're not gonna be seeing big master plan communities anymore in the future. We'll see smaller development, infill, and redevelopment. The little inset graph you've seen before too, but again, just to sort of highlight the differences, and as Elizabeth mentioned too, the 1960s and the 1970s were these prime growth periods for not only our VADA but Jefferson County. So this is a refresh of the map that's in the, uh, this is our VADA report. And again, too, you can see that the, um, census blocks with the greatest population growth are in the northwest and followed by a cluster of some, um, growth as well too along the I-70 corridor. So taking a look at age, specifically for our VADA, our median age is 40.1 years of age. And we sort of rank right up there with Centennial, just a, a little bit less in median age from Centennial. And of course, um, quite a bit older than Colorado. And just a little, um, comparison on the right side of the slide here. We've had just a little bit of a decrease from 40.9 to 40.1. So we're in the same ranking as we were in the previous report, but maybe we're seeing a little bit more of an influence of those communities, um, in the development that's happening in the West. For median age, we are now leading our peer cities in the proportion of the population, 65 and older at 16.1%. And when we compare that with some previous years, you can see that it really has increased quite a bit from 2000, 50.5% increase in seniors since 2000. And last, in the previous report, we were tied with Lakewood with the percentage of seniors, and we have now surpassed Lakewood in the ranking. So Elizabeth had a chart that kind of showed this as well too with the sort of the wave of the boomers. And this kind of shows the Arvada age distribution over time from 2000, 2010, and 2017. And you can see how the peak of the boomers has kind of moved to the right as that proportion of the population in the older age cohorts has increased. So our largest age group is the 55 to 59-year-olds at representing 8.2% of the population. So on the other hand, the proportion of our population 19 years of younger has been declining. It's 23% of our population now, and that's declined from 28.7% in 2000. So with race, um, these numbers are quite similar to what was before. So this is kind of an update. There's a, a little bit of some tweaking on some of these numbers. But we are the most homogeneous community within the region amongst our peer cities with 91.8% white population. And that's in contrast to Aurora, which is the most diverse population, most diverse city. With the proportion of Hispanic and Latino residents, we're in the same position in the ranking here as we were in the previous report, basically at about 14.5%. And even though I have a red arrow indicating an increase, it is just a 0.1% increase, which is pretty modest. So we can almost say that it's, um, even though within the state, the Hispanic population might be rising here, it might be just kind of very, very slowly increasing. And then with our foreign-born population, um, we continue with a similar position as we had last year, um, although it is a slight increase in number with 5.2% of our population being foreign-born. And then a little bit of adjustment for the place of birth for our VADA residents. Europe still has the largest, our foreign-born residents are primarily from Europe. But the second position now falls to Asia where in the previous report it was Latin America. So a little bit of a switch there. The languages spoken at home, those numbers are pretty much the same as in the prior report. So for households, again, this is pretty consistent as well too. We kind of rank fourth behind Highlands Ranch, Centennial, and Thornton in the proportion of family households. We're a very family-oriented community. Two-thirds, 67% are family households, 33% are non-family households. Basically, no change there. But, and in our average household size, these numbers are basically the same. Um, our average household size increased from 2.49 to 2.5, um, not really very significant. Our average family size stayed the same. And again, it should be noted that both of these have been declining since 2000.
Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Can we go back two slides real quick? Sorry, it's taking me a while to digest this one. When we say non-family households, is it typical, what kind of dwelling do non-family households live in? Is it apartments, townhouses? Or do you really know? Or do we ever correlate that?
A non-family household can be a one-person household, and you can still have a one-person household in ownership in a single-family detached dwelling. So, um, I do have some information a little bit later about tenure, which might be able to help. But, um, I don't know if I have specifically that information in this report here.
Well, maybe you don't have in the report, but where I'm leading to is it'd be very interesting to know, uh, how this chart breaks up into dwelling type. Where I'm going is sometimes, well, I guess where the question is, is I've, some of our neighbors have, you know, kind of thought that we don't have certain housing availability. Um, but, but I think that this clearly shows that every neighbor has a different mix of environments in which our population. So I'd just be curious if, if the family households are traditionally, you know, single-family detached homes and non-family are typically apartments. I wonder how that correlates to how our housing stock is. So whenever spare time, I know you guys all don't have that, but when you do, it would be interesting if we, there's some way we can correlate that. At least, it doesn't have to be, um, scientific, but maybe more of the art of that. Something that'd be interesting, just because I, I think in our demographics, we don't have a lot of apartments, um, which shows a lower number. And I think of Lakewood has a higher number and they have a lot more apartments. And sometimes I, and I don't know, you talked to the mayor down there, but sometimes there's a comment made that, uh, we don't, we don't, we don't have enough diversity in our, with our neighboring cities and housing stock and, and our population. So I think this kind of highlights why we wouldn't match like Lakewood because it's a different, different population. So is that confusing as hell or is that good? You're all like looking at me like that?
I believe we could, we'll, we'll all get together and talk a little bit about your comments, and I think we can maybe provide some information that may be helpful.
It's just curious, like I said, don't spend a lot of time, but more of the art than the science on that. That'd be some interesting information for me.
Okay.
Ms. Ford?
So I, I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me please again, what is a non-family household? Define that for me.
Uh, one or more people who are not related. So a family is, sorry, um, two or more people who are related, living together. And a non-family household is one or more non-related people living together.
So then my question would be, what does it matter whether they're related or not? Wouldn't it be more, uh, relevant, the size of family, whether they're family or non-family, looking at a household and the number of people in that household, regardless of their relationship, right? Is gonna depend on the type of house that, or a housing unit that they would purchase? So I guess I'm, I'm struck with your question. I, I wasn't quite sure where you were going with that.
Well, now that you said that out loud, I don't know if I was clear, if I knew where I was going. Well, I guess what I'm looking for is there any relationship to family and, you know, population demographics versus the housing stock? Maybe that's, maybe bring that up a level. And, and how does community demographics and housing stock correlate? If, if you can, I, I don't know.
I, I think it's something we can look at. I mean, you know, anecdotally, we, we are predominantly a, a single-family household community. And those kinds of units are typically inhabited by, by families. Uh, and, and we have a lower percentage of, of multifamily, uh, units. Uh, and, and we probably have a lot of families that live in those, but we also probably have a lot of non-family households that, that utilize those as well. So we, I, let us see if we can, um, discuss that and, and maybe get back to the council at some point.
Carry on.
Okay. So with households. So we were talking about number of people in the households. So this is all households here. So this chart on the left side of the slide is the breakdown of all households. So you can see the, um, one-person households, um, 26.5%. Uh, two-person households, 36.8%. So as I'd mentioned, um, in the prior report here, uh, basically 63.3% of residents live in one and two-person households. And then with children, you can see on the chart on the right-hand side here that we rank rather low with the proportion of households with children that are of school age. So 28% of households with children, um, 28% of households rather have children that are eight, less than 18 years of age. So taking a look at the other end of the age spectrum, then at senior households. So we rank at the top here.
Ms. Ford, you've got another question?
Okay. All right. So of all households with one or more persons 65 years of older, we have 28.8% of all of our households have at least a, a senior citizen, one or more senior citizens. So this certainly carries on from what Elizabeth was saying in terms of the aging in Jefferson County. So, and you can see that, um, after Centennial, Lakewood ranks very high, highly up there as well too. Now, what's interesting, if you take that segment of the senior households and you just look at the one-person households, which are seniors with 65 and older, 73% of those households are female, 27% are male.
So that's what I want to talk to you about. Because one of my questions on that is, overall, we know that women tend to make less money than men. So when I looked at this chart, it tells me that we have more females that are living in, right, living alone. And I'm looking at what we're building currently in the city of our VADA. And I think my question would be, I would be interested in finding out what is the difference between males and females, single males and females households? What their income is, what the difference is? Because we know that most of the people on Section 8 housing are single female, uh, single females. To me, this shows a problem, especially as the population in the older category increases. We're gonna have more female, single females living in households. And I think it'd be interesting, um, to find out what that difference is in income.
I think we can look into that.
I, I also wanted to ask you just one overall question. Is there a reason Wheat Ridge is not included in these statistics? Does it have to do with population?
Yes, their population's less than 100,000.
But they're still, their age is not as high as our VADA? Or is it? Because I, I talked to a constituent the other day and they thought Wheat Ridge was a little older than our VADA and I, I couldn't say for sure.
Yeah, offhand, I can't remember. We can certainly get you that number as well too about the surrounding cities for their median age. The smaller communities, Golden, for instance, too.
Just, just for senior population. You don't have to go through all the age groups.
Sure. Sure. So in taking a look at average household size by census block group, this is an updated map from what was presented before. Dark green is the larger household size. The brown and the tan are the smaller household sizes, and you can see the distribution. The smaller household sizes are along I-70 and on the west side of the Wadsworth Boulevard, and the larger households are in the new communities in the west. So for income, this was interesting to take a look at these numbers. These are the 2017 ACS one-year estimates, and they're based on the 2016 salary estimate.
What's ACS?
Adjusted for inflation. I just wanted to clarify that basically, we're kind of looking at income data that's still two years in arrears.
Okay, what's ACS?
Oh, sorry, American Community Survey.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Census Bureau and that. So all the communities happily had an income, an increase in their income. So Arvada's median household income is 81,787,000. We moved up into third place. We were in fourth in the previous report. Our median family income is just a touch over 99,000. We're in the same ranking position there in fourth place. So taking a look at median household income, you can see the numbers there in the increase between the 2016 number, which was 75,000, to the 2017 number, which was 81,787. There's quite a substantive increase. And where this comes into play here is the rise in the high-income earners that I mentioned before in this previous report. So we're really seeing an increase in the proportion of households with an annual salary of over 100,000. So the 2017 numbers, that 39.8, almost 40 percent of Arvada households have an income of over $100,000.
Excuse me, Loretta, can I ask you a question about that? With the increase in households of 100,000 or more, do you think that that change is due to migration from, you know, out of the other states, you know, from the coasts coming in? What is driving the fact that we have more people making over 100,000? Is it truly because we have change in jobs, or is it because of people coming into the state? Do we know what that causes?
It could probably be a mixture of both people coming into the state and also probably Colorado residents moving into the western communities in Arvada with their families, because those are, that's the area which you saw before, which are the households with the higher median income.
So you think it's just because of numbers of people moving into the western part?
I would have to research the data a little bit more to clarify, see what I could find on that. But I think it's just an increase in the numbers of the families with the higher median income. So also, good news, relatively speaking, is that our poverty levels have certainly gone down since the recession. There was a definite peak around 2010. We had flagged some things to watch, and poverty levels have been decreasing. So families below poverty level make up 4.2 percent.
I wanted to ask a question on that, too. If we were to provide data at poverty level and below, do you think that that would change that percentage much?
For all people, or?
In Arvada, for those who are at poverty and below. If we included at poverty and below, would that include, would that increase the 4.2 percent much? Because if you're at poverty level, you're at poverty level, right?
Right.
You're at a low level. You're, these figures are showing below poverty level, and I'm saying, if you're, if you're at poverty level, that's pretty low. So if we were to take that number up to poverty level, would it increase that 4.2 percent much, or would it be still right around that area?
Still, that is the number from poverty level, what is defined as the poverty level below. So.
So the title is wrong. It should be Arvada's families at poverty level or below.
Or below, right.
Right, okay.
Okay. Right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That answer your question?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then I also wanted to know if we could get income by district, if we could look at, by district, to see what areas are, where the poverty level is in Arvada.
Where we have it by the census block on the next.
By census block.
Mm-hmm. And what about by age?
I think we can define that by age as well.
Okay. I'd like to see it by age as well.
Okay.
Are you going to talk about education, too?
Yes.
Next slide.
Because I have a question about that one.
Yeah. So Arvada, then, this is the updated information here for people who are employed in Arvada with a bachelor's degree or higher. So 38.7 percent of people who are working do have a bachelor's degree or higher. So that is the number. And we're sort of at the midpoint in that position there. And then the chart on the right basically shows the occupation categories for residents, and the point of this was to show that there has been an increase from 36 percent to 45 percent in the management, business, science, and art occupation category, which is the highest income category in the city. Basically, with a median salary of about $66,000 to $68,000 per person.
So I'm just looking at one, this one chart at the moment, and it's called Arvada Median Household Income Since 2000. And in the less than 25,000 category, it actually shows an increase from 2016 to 2017. So I believe, if I heard right, you said that it actually went down, our poverty level? Was that what you said before, our poverty level went down?
We can go back to this slide here on the poverty level, and you can see the numbers between 2015, when Arvada's families below poverty, and this is just the one segment, you know, all people, families, and then children. So just looking at families, in 2015, 6.1 percent of all families in Arvada were below the poverty level. That decreased to 4.2 percent in 2017. And then the tiny little numbers on the chart below basically show that for all people, the number had decreased from 7.6 percent to 6.8 percent. That's that middle line in that little chart there.
And what is the poverty level? What amount do we?
It's basically set every year by HUD. Yeah, by HUD. Yeah, and it's, you know, it's set for a family of four, a family of three, two, one. So it's different numbers, and it varies each year. So here is the updated map, Arvada income by census block group. The darkest green colors are the census blocks with the highest income in the western part of the community.
So we could overlay a district map on that if we wanted to. Right? Okay.
Okay. And then for housing tenure, in ownership, we rank very high with ownership in third place, with 73.4 percent of our houses being owner-occupied, 26.6 percent of housing being renter-occupied, and of course, those can be all different types of housing, whether it's single-family detached townhome or multifamily. And for housing types here, very similar numbers to last year in terms of single-family, sorry, single-unit detached and multifamily units in the ranking. Those have not changed. But what is important here, which was a bit of a standout, was the cost burden for renters. So the chart on the right has Arvada's residents' income spent on housing. The two bars on the left are the owner households, which basically has not changed. Those numbers are the same from two years ago. The renter households, though, are more cost-burdened, with renters spending more than 30 percent of income, increasing from 53 percent in 2016 to 62 percent in 2017.
Can I ask you, can I ask, oh, I'm sorry, the state, Elizabeth? Elizabeth, when you look at that statistic, that 62 percent of renter households are cost-burdened, over 30 percent of their income, what do you see as the, as the effect of that for the future? How do you see that number affecting the economy?
Well, I mean, certainly, if you're spending more on rent, then you have less to spend on everything else. So it definitely constrains the economy. Our economy is driven by about 70 percent. Consumer economy drives it. And so it does a couple of things. One, it pushes downward pressure on expenditures, but it also pushes people in that, you know, typically transition from a renter to an owner. But in order to become an owner, you need that down payment. And so if you're spending more of your income on rent, then you have less, and you can start saving for a down payment. What you really need to do is move into that owner-occupied, which is nice that you've got a lot, because that's where you start building wealth. And that's what's really important for the future of a community, a county, the state, is to build wealth over that time. If you've got a lot of renters that are 45, 55 years old, that's really hard on them and the economy.
And so I see that we're building renting, rental units at higher rates. What is, does that seem counterintuitive in terms of the future, as far as what we're creating in terms of economic or non-economic wealth?
You know, what's, what's hard with building and construction and that whole industry is they are very slow. It takes about five years to get a project off the ground. And so we were really below what we needed in terms of rentals about five years ago. And now we finally have them. But now, the folks that needed them have already aged five years. And so if you remember that age distribution for Colorado, we've got a lot of millennials. The leading end of those millennials are now in their, like, 48, 49 years old. And, I'm sorry, 38, 39 years old, moving beyond the rental into the owner. So what we needed was those rentals back five years ago. So it's just that we're slow. I don't think we're overbuilt forever. We're a little overbuilt right now, but that, in a big picture, that's not a bad thing, because what does that do to price?
Winds it down.
Downward pressure makes it a little bit easier. So, and we've seen that with the last probably three-quarters, we've seen a downward pressure on rentals, which is good.
Okay, thank you.
So next is transportation. And the change really here, and it's been across all communities, has been the increase in people who are working at home. In Arvada, that increased from 6.4 percent to 7 percent, a little bit of an increase. Some of the other communities saw a much greater increase. We are very much a commuting city, and 81.6 of people who do commute choose to drive alone to work, either because of where their work is located or because of preference.
Boy, I bet if we had a train, we could cut that number down a little bit. Just saying, if RTD's listening.
Maybe a Parkway, too.
And a Parkway, too, yes.
So for vehicles per household, currently, you can see we're ranked sort of fourth behind some other cities there at 2.07. This is up from 2.02 in the previous report. And this is, actually, all the communities went up a little bit in vehicles per household from the previous census number. So in vehicles per household, generally, there has been a 2 percent increase, both in owner-occupied and renter-occupied households in having two or more vehicles. And actually, this is kind of a national trend, if you've been reading some things about this. There's sort of this increasing number of households having two or more vehicles. Still, though, for our renter-occupied households, 9 percent of those households do not have any vehicles. And for owner-occupied, it's only 1 percent.
Hey, Loretta, can I ask you a quick, quick question, or this might be even directed at you, Mr. Devon? I know one of the discussions we want to have here in the future is talking about parking ratios with regard to multifamily housing, and particularly subsidized multifamily housing. And this slide, I think, kind of speaks to that. I don't know if there's any more depth to this, but if there is, is that something that you could find and sort out for us, or provide maybe to the city manager or whatever, so that it could be part of those future discussions when we talk about those things?
Yes.
Yes, the answer's yes.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Well, I was going to say, my comment was to Brian Archer. I bought two cars during fourth quarter, so that increased the sales tax revenue in this review. So just so you know, I'm part of that two-plus cars.
Thank you. It's a good start.
Mr. Marriott indicated he is, as well.
Oh, you did, too? Good job. Good job. We're all contributing.
Could you all buy a few more cars? That would be good.
Yeah.
What about the rest of you?
Yeah, what about the rest of you? Did you contribute to the economy?
Not going to happen.
Real quick, before we go too far into transportation, I just want, I was cutting with a chainsaw back here a minute ago. Go any further, but I want to close on this income and this housing. You know, I asked about the demographics and the housing and how it matches, and I did some rough math, and I just thought this, just take a note of it and see if it's accurate. But based on all the numbers I've seen and heard, it looks like 3 percent of the owners own multi-units, and then 5 percent of renters are in single families, of which then 12 percent of non-families live in single-family houses. So why I want to drive to that is, I'm trying to look for, is there any way to know if there are folks that are housing together, roommates, multiple roommates, to afford living in the city? And that's, that's really the golden egg I'm looking for in these numbers. I just trying to connect them all. But it looks like there's, I'm thinking it's about 12 percent non-family live in single homes, which means there must be roommates, a lot of them possibly. So that's kind of where I was trying to go. So maybe you can help me look through that number and see. Okay.
Yeah, we can do some more research on that.
Go into transportation, which is all automation right now, so, or soon will be.
Okay. So in summary, then, so Arvada is really doing very well. All these indicators show that we're continuing to do very well with, compared to our peer cities. Our ranking is, is pretty much the same as in the previous report. High, we do have the highest proportion of seniors, and there are the increasing needs for housing, transportation, and services, you know, building on what Elizabeth had said in her presentation. We do have increasing diversity with the Hispanic-Latino population, but it seems to be leveling off. Median and family household increasing for all communities within the region. The cost burden, we talked about that. And, but the thing is, though, several of the indicators are really quite consistent. So this report just gives you the updated information, so that you can use that for your retreat. So for the next steps, we will update this with the American Community Survey ACS data when it comes out in December of 2019, and then be back in front of you in January 2020.
Very good, thanks. Thank you both for your presentations. It does give us good information. Are there any other questions from council? Seeing none. Mr. Devon, anything else for us tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would be interested in getting a little feedback, and if not now, certainly maybe at the retreat, on the information I provided you last week on the potential timeline for the implementation of waste hauling. you last week on the potential timeline for the implementation of waste hauling. The message we got was, let's get our foot on the gas, and we gave you a pretty aggressive schedule. And if there's any feedback you want to offer tonight on that, great. If not, maybe on Friday during the retreat. But some of these dates that we listed in there actually start in about three weeks. So, it'd be good to know how you all feel about the schedule.
Ms. Miller, you're first.
I feel great about that, Mr. Devon. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
The only thing I would say is, the way it looks pitched to us is that somebody will issue an RFP and then we'll get responses from that RFP. My suggestion would be to put in a discussion before that, probably with input from the public and then, and then with council, to what, our vision of what that looks like. You know, in other words, I think there's a, there is a whole menu of options and ways that that could be structured, and we've had none of those discussions so far. So, I would suggest before you get to the starting line and fire the gun, there ought to be at least some discussion about that, and we probably ought to hear from the public about that, too, because as I've spoken to a number of people, it appears there's dozens of different ways of doing this same thing. So, I think before we, you know, we ought to have that first.
Mr. Pfeifer.
And the only thing I would have is, RFP kind of concerns me. I don't know why we don't go for an RFI versus an RFP. RFP's a proposal, RFI's for information. I think we should find out what people are doing, the industry are doing for information. We're not making a proposal on anything yet because we haven't voted, or the citizens haven't voted, or anything hasn't happened yet. So, I'm a little nervous saying it's an RFP at this early in the stage.
Yes.
Once we know what it is, then it should go out for RFP, but I think RFI would be a better approach.
So, again, I just want to offer the context. We were asked to kind of put our foot on the gas.
Yeah.
And this is the foot on the gas. If we, if we want to have community meetings, or if we want to look at a different way of, of moving forward with this, we certainly can probably slow this timeline down, which, if you're all okay with that, that's, that's fine. But I, that's the only caution I would ask. You know, the, the RFP idea is because of the research that the Sustainability Advisory Committee has done in terms of looking at some best practices from across the metro area and really even across the state. So, you know, I think we can, we can, you know, probably bring the RFP to you, and if you think there's a need for, for, you know, more research or whatever, we can certainly do that. Just slows down this timeline. That's, I think, the, that's the note of caution that I want to offer.
Well, maybe we should talk a little bit more at the retreat. I just, my fear is, is what are you basing your RFP on, on what data? It's really, I guess, at the end of the day, I mean, I think that was the question, is we were looking for an objective review of all the data we do have to formulate, you know, what a proposal could look like. I think that's where John's kind of, kind of going a little bit, so.
So, are you thinking that with the RFP, with the current request, that we wouldn't have accurate numbers as to number of households that would be a part of that RFP, that we would have to have greater?
But I think an RFP would indicate that we know how the framework would be done. I think an RFP would have to have framework. I'm looking to staff. You guys have to review the RFP. There's rules around RFP, and, and you would have to know what that framework is. And, you know, to John's answer, are we dividing it up by four? Are we doing one big trash haul? Are we doing 11? Are we, you know, I mean, there's, I don't, you think an RFP will result in information for that, or would RFI provide you?
An RFP would result in information around pricing and, and options and those kinds of things. So, and that, that's information that staff and the Sustainability Advisory Committee has already researched. You know, my sense is that you'd like to see what that is. That's, that's my sense.
Okay.
And, and we can certainly do that. You know, some of this, I think we can be, we can do with information, but some of it you may want to discuss, which means, in my mind, anyway, a workshop. And, and, you know, if, if that's what you would like to do, we can certainly do that. There's, there's some room in this schedule to, to kind of do some of that simultaneously, but, you know, certainly, the RFP, based on the schedule, would likely be released before we would actually have an opportunity to, to discuss it with you in advance. So, if you would like to discuss it, if you would like to have us discuss it with you, then that would slow down this timeline to some degree.
Well, my big thing is to get it right. So, you know, I want to move it along, but we've got to get it right in terms of the public. So, Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I would fully agree with that, that we have to get it right, but I think we have to get it started and then be flexible in those timelines, in the timeline from that point on, whether we need more information, whether we need to slow it down, additional meetings, additional information, whatever. But I think the most important date is coming up in February. So, that's the start date. And as the mayor indicated, the second most important thing is to get it right, and I believe we can do that.
Mr. Jones?
Well, two questions. The first question also, there was some, and maybe this is just, maybe I heard it wrong, but I thought that there was a question around whether or not council makes the decision, or whether or not it's put out for the community to make the, the decision in kind of a general, kind of an election kind of thing. So, I don't, I didn't see where there was that stage in there to make that determination.
Are you talking about an election?
Yeah.
Like some sort of advisory ballot measure?
Yeah.
So, that is not part of this? That wasn't, again, that wasn't the direction I got, the feedback I got from council last, last week. It was...
Well, and I apologize. I wasn't, obviously, I wasn't here last week.
No, I understand. I understand. The, the issue was, you know, give, give us a schedule that can get this done quickly. So, this is the schedule that, that we're offering at this point. This does not have any consideration of a ballot measure for the, you know, for the November ballot.
Okay. And then, my second question is, I'm already receiving lots of feedback that, from a community engagement perspective. Who should we send that to?
You can, you're welcome to send it to me.
Okay.
And I'll make sure it gets to the Sustainability Advisory Committee and, and other places.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I just want to make one comment. I think a couple of these questions up here have, have illuminated it, that there are some fairly heavy policy decisions that would have to be made, that probably ought to be made by the council before we go ask for proposals on this, things like, is this going to be a council decision, or are we going to have a referendum? I, you know, I have no idea what council's pleasure is there, but, but thing, but all kinds of policy questions. And I hate to see us put out a request for a proposal and then say, okay, now we have to pick from this proposal or not this proposal, or we can make this little modification or that little modification. I think if we had, while it might take a little more time upfront, we might be better off on the backside. I don't know that it lengthens things out more, but gives us a better chance at kind of getting it, getting it right. So, again, for me, I would say those, we might ought to have a couple of those policy decisions first, if we could.
Thank you, Mayor Porte, Marriott. I would like to propose to council that we receive your feedback tonight, and that we come to you, we've talked about, on February the 11th, we'd like to have a dual meeting. One, part of it would be a business meeting. We've got some, some public hearing items that we'd like to schedule that night, and use part of the meeting for that, and then use the, the workshop portion of the meeting for, for more discussion regarding this effort, so that we get a, we can, we can let you know what we're doing, and if there's adjustments or things like that that you want to make, then we can certainly do that. So, we wanted to give you the most aggressive schedule we could, because that's what I heard last Monday night. And we can, we can probably get pretty close to this schedule, but if we, if we are going to have some discussion, if we're going to have more community meetings, and certainly if there's going to be any kind of a ballot measure, that would certainly slow these, these, these items down to some degree.
I think it was useful to get the, the fast-track, you know, information, and then we can look at that in comparison to the discussion of the policy issues that we have to decide, and, you know, bless you, and look at it in terms of, you know, and make the policy decision. Do we refer this to the ballot? Do we make the decision as council? But, you know, I mean, there's going to be issues in terms of, you know, how, how do people get billed? How are we going to deal with HOAs that have existing contractors? There's, I mean, there's a number of issues that we do need to address, I think, before we can go to the RFP stage. I'm intrigued by the request for information concept, but I think we need to know, how, how long would that slow us down to, to get that kind of information?
Well, and just one other thing that I think ought to be considered is, there's lots of unincorporated Jefferson County that trucks drive through to get to parts of the city that are surrounded by...
We're going to build a wall.
Mr. Devon's going to pay for it.
[laughing]
So, just again, I think there's, there are things that I don't know that we've had any conversation about that, you know, as it relates to Jefferson County as well. Not that we're making decisions for them, but, you know, these trucks are impacting those streets as well.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, I incorporate all those incorporated areas. You know, the only reason the RFI is just, I know there's a lot of information that they've done, but what the RFI, it's always done for myself, is getting the industry to provide feedback, back on what their realm of possibility is. Because, you know, if you don't know what the realm of their possibility is, you might throw an RP and you might get one bidder, and that doesn't really, that's not what we want to do. We, I think if you get industry input that helps shape it, we can see what a larger net can grab in. And that, that's usually how I leverage the RFI, because then it doesn't get anyone excited about, oh, I might win this, this is a big proposal, and I want, you know. Now, granted, this, this is saying you'll go straight into a bid and we would award it, but I don't know. However you want to handle it, that was my question about the RFI. I was just getting industry input, that's all.
Yeah. I, what I'm hearing from councils, I think we should devote part of the meeting on February the 11th to kind of flesh through this and outline it in a little bit more detail so that you're all understanding of what we're doing. I'm, I'm sure that we will have multiple members of the Sustainability Advisory Committee here to assist staff with any of this information. And I, you know, I think that's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure that I gave you guys what I heard you wanted last Monday, so that we could at least get the conversation started.
Very good. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, we are adjourned.